Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the City of Palm Coast City Council Business Meeting. Today is Tuesday, November the 15th. It's 9:00 a.m., and we are in the community wing of City Hall. If you would all please rise and join me for our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the God for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If the clerk would call the roll, please.
Mayor Alvin.
Present.
Vice Mayor Brankino.
Right here.
Councilmember Danko.
Here.
Councilmember Finelli.
Present.
Councilmember Clufus.
Present.
All members are present.
We now move to the agenda item, Public Participation. In order for city staff to be able to respond to your questions or concerns, please fill out a comment card with your contact information. The comment cards can be found on the table near the agendas or available from the Communications and Marketing Manager in the rear of the room. Public participation shall be held in accordance with Section 286.0114 Florida statutes and pursuant to the City Council's meeting policies and procedures. Each speaker shall, at the podium, provide their name and may speak for up to three minutes. The public may provide comments to the City Council relative to matters not on the agenda at the times indicated in this agenda. Following any comments from the public, there may be discussion by the City Council. When addressing the City Council on specific enumerated agenda items, speakers shall direct all comments to the mayor, make their comments concise and to the point, not speak more than once on the same subject, not by speech or otherwise delay or interrupt the proceedings or the peace of the City Council, obey the orders of the mayor and the City Council, and not make any irrelevant, impertinent, or slanderous comments while addressing the City Council, which pursuant to council rules shall be considered disorderly. Any person who becomes disorderly or who fails to confine his or her comments to the identified subject or business shall be cautioned by the mayor and thereafter must conclude his or her remarks on the subject within the remaining designated time limit. Any speaker failing to comply as cautioned shall be barred from making any additional comments during the meeting and may be removed as necessary for the remainder of the meeting. Members of the public may make comments during the public comment portion of the meeting. Please be advised that public comment will only be permitted during the public comment portions of the agenda at the times indicated by the chair during the meeting. And with that, I would open up the podium for any members of the public that would wish to address City Council. So please come forward. Does anyone have public comment to make? Yes, sir.
First of all, I would like to basically state that we're going to have a boat parade. I know there's going to be a presentation, but I would encourage everybody, if you have a boat, get in the parade. We had close to 100 last year. We want to kind of see what we can do this year, and I'm sure we're going to do a great Mr. Mayor, City Council, and City Manager, I would first like to thank Acting Councilman John Finelli. He has taken time, a couple of times, to meet with the Cimarron Safety Groups, and we appreciate your help, John.
Thank you.
It's been great. Are you aware that between the feeder streets off of Cimarron and the sanctuary, we have at least 31 homes under construction? That's a great number of homes, especially for the, uh, that area. What does that mean as we have more and more people moving into this area, more and more children? It means that we're going to have additional traffic, additional cars. Let's say every family has a car and a half or something like that. So that's additional traffic every day. More kids, children of school age, waiting for the bus, school buses in the morning. I see it every day. I bike that whole area virtually daily, and I can guarantee you, there are more and more kids stopping, waiting for a school bus. Walkers, more walkers than I've ever seen before, and bikers like me. And I can tell you a lot of stories about close calls on bikers. Along with the addition of the homes, not only are the cars going to be coming in, but you're going to have all the service people, the lawn people, whatever you have, that's going to increase the traffic. One person just off of Cimarron Drive told Al Cryer, and everybody knows Al, he is putting his house up for sale because when he moved here, he didn't believe he was going to be on a highway, referring the highway as being Cimarron Drive. My request to you is to continue working on a pedestrian path in the calendar year of 2023. We really, really need that. Yes, Mayor?
Your time has expired now.
Okay.
Appreciate your comments. I think you're satisfied that you made your point.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next speaker, please.
When somebody does a good job at something, they should be, get some kind of special accolades or appreciation. And there's a councilman sitting up there. His name is John Finelli. I didn't know much about him, but if I could, if we could handpick somebody to be a councilman rather than this stupid electoral process that we do, that would be the guy that I'd pick because he's open-minded, he's fair, he's honest, and he's done an exceptional job. And even though there's going to be a good replacement, I just want the city to know that, you know, there's going to be a big void in the council once he steps down. So, John, thank you for your time and what you've done for the city. Now, the other guy, we know who he is, the Vice Mayor. He's some character, I'll tell you. But on behalf of the residents and especially myself, I'd like to thank, I'm trying to think of his name now. The bald-headed guy that's just up there. Thank you for doing your job, and not like John, we're going to miss you. Should I say that? But, you know, good luck. If you ever decide to come back and run for council again, please let us know so we can move. All right, that's all I want to say. Thank you for your.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, next speaker, please.
Yes, good morning. George Mail, Palm Coast. I also would like to thank Mr. Brankino for his service. Mr. Finelli, I'd like to thank you for your service. We definitely welcome you back if you decide you want to put up with the frustration and aggravation again, which I'm not sure you would, but we would really enjoy it. And congratulations to the incoming council members when they get here. Recently, we had the Palm Coast Arts Festival down in the park here and everything. It, to me, seemed like a good success. I hope the city will consider keeping it going and possibly expanding, getting more art people here, vendors, like they do in New Smyrna and Daytona, they have quite a few. I think it would enhance the city and bring people in, you know, for the day, et cetera. While we were there, my wife was shopping at one of the vendors right near the restrooms, and I needed to use the restroom. And maybe just being right-handed, looking at the back of the building, I just naturally walked towards the right side of the building to use the men's room. Well, I get there, and it's the ladies' room. And so when I came back out after having used the left side, I noticed she was still shopping, and I watched, and almost every man that went there gravitated towards the right side, and it happened to be the ladies' room. And I saw women going towards the left side, which happened to be the men's room. So all I ask is very cheaply, if you have a stencil on the back of the building, paint men and women, or put a small sign that will point the people to that way. So that if you have people with walkers, people in wheelchairs, it may seem like insignificant to us, but that's quite a few steps and would be very convenient to be able to do that. So thank you very much, and have a good day.
Thank you for your comment. Is there another speaker that would like to address City Council at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close this section of the agenda for public comment, and we will move on to the prior minutes. We have minutes from the November 1st, 2022 Business Meeting. I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion from Councilman Danko and a second from Vice, Vice Mayor Brank, from the bald-headed guy, Vice Mayor Brankino. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Does the clerk have the count? Thank you. We'll next move on to our Presentations and Proclamations, and we'll begin with the presentation of award for the 2022 FMIT Partnership. And Ms. Fuller, will you be presenting?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Evan McClellan. I'm a Risk and Safety Consultant with the Florida League of Cities and the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust. You all probably know the HR and Risk Management staff for the City of Palm Coast. I'm here today to present to the city our first of hopefully many annual to come recognitions for the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust Partnership Award in Risk Management and Safety Management. I've been with the FMIT for a little over nine years now as a Risk and Safety Consultant. That's my training and background. Having been assigned to the central east Florida area, which encompasses Nassau County all the way down to Port St. Lucie and everywhere in between, Palm Coast happens to be a shining star of the 144 FMIT members that I have, and it's something that should be recognized. For many years, they were struggling, you all were struggling with trying to keep your workers' compensation premiums down with some inflated incidents of employee injuries and the resulting increase in premiums. And so we started taking a look at it about four or five years ago to see what we could do to help Tim and his staff try and get a handle on things. And I would just like to say that with a renewed dedication to managing their claims, managing their losses, managing safety and building a safety culture that didn't really exist prior to a couple of years ago, it's worked wonders. I just want to throw out a few numbers, if I may. Starting in 2016, you all were paying about $450,000 per year in workers' compensation premium. And then a small little uptick in 2017 to $500,000. And then, starting in 17, when we really looked at this and figured what we could do as a team to help out, it's steadily gone down over the last five years. In 2018, dropped from 500,000 to 475, 2019, down to 396, 2020, down to 349. And that's the most recent year that we've got data on, the 2021-2022 fiscal year, dropped down to $296,000. So from 500,000 down to roughly 300,000, $200,000 in savings in workers' compensation premiums as a result of the rededication to safety and risk management. You guys are saving taxpayers $200,000 a year, you know, and so that's something to be applauded and awarded. And so I just wanted to present this award to you all and say thank you for all your hard work.
That's very, very good news for us. And just before we continue on, City Manager, I have to give you a shot at this. That's your team, so.
You guys are rock stars, but also it's a citywide initiative. We like to say safety never stops, and especially after a challenging week with the storm. It was our utmost priority to make sure all of our staff are safe, and they had the, what we call PPE, the protection that they need to do their jobs, not just storm-related, but every day. And it's always at the forefront, and I just applaud our efforts, but like to applaud the whole city as an organization for staying safe.
Very good. Can I just add something? This is beautiful, and the numbers are beautiful, but the thing is the safety. And that's one of the reasons I, four years ago, about exactly four years ago, I made sure that I was going to fight for one of the departments that had the most workman's compensation problems, which is public works. They were working in conditions that no human should work. And thank God, and they deserve it. Thank God, we're doing much better, and I'm pretty sure that, you know, soon, they're going to be working in a situation that will be no workman's compensations claimed because they deserve it. Thank you very much, guys. You guys are doing a phenomenal job. Safety, safety, safety. And that's what they're doing, and I hope that's what we're creating for them over here. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. The Director of HR, Ms. Fuller, would you like to say a few words?
Absolutely. Safety is a top priority in our culture here, and it's been a collaboration from our leaders to our crew leaders, throughout all of the city employees, is what this award represents. And we're committed to remain focused to prevention and mitigation for all of our employees.
I appreciate that, and I think this is an example of a bar that we are setting for ourselves here in the city to become a model for the rest of the state and perhaps further than that for many different things. This is certainly a very good place to start. If we're on top of 144 other cities you mentioned, it's going to make raising the bar even harder, but I.
That's just 144 in my region.
Well, and you're here, so yeah.
600 some odd cities throughout the state, so.
Okay. So that gives us room to improve even further and become that model which would be pointed to throughout the rest of the state, not to make it any harder for, I know you guys can do it, so we appreciate that very, very much. Very good. So congratulations to everyone. Thank you. (applause). Well, in case you all can't tell, I'm very fired up about the next piece of the agenda, which would be a proclamation to commemorate this year's Boat Parade. And the one thing I didn't hear, and apologies to the gentleman before, I'll follow up with you, your time expired, but we can talk some more, is that the one thing that you failed to mention in the opening comment was not that we have a boat parade, we have the biggest and the best boat parade in all of Florida. So that resonates strongly with me because I just returned from visiting the biggest, baddest boat in the ocean, which is our U.S. Navy's Gerald R. Ford, which is now a sister city of the City of Palm Coast. So I think it gives, it lends itself a special festivity, this coming Boat Parade. So we will do all weekend as a city to get even more to sign up and come along and enjoy this wonderful parade. So Ms. Coe, would you come up and join me? And any other members of, who else has participated? Come on up while I do this.
Is Al here? I didn't see Al.
I didn't see Al.
I didn't see Al. Oh, Al, Al's here. Okay. Got it, I wasn't sure. Fair enough.
All right, straight face. Whereas the Palm Coast Yacht Club is honored and proud to annually organize Palm Coast Holiday Boat Parade, one of our area's major holiday events. And whereas the Palm Coast Yacht Club, which offers social and nautical education activities for all who love boating, inaugurated the Boat Parade in 1983 and has been at the helm for the past 39 years. Whereas the 2022 Holiday Parade will respectfully honor the memory of Joe Rizzo, who was a longtime champion of the Flagler School System, Executive Director of the Flagler Education Foundation, and a major mover and shaker in the Palm Coast community. And whereas boaters and fans will be treated to the colorful and festive decorations adorning so many parade vessels, led by Grand Marshals, myself and Flagler County Sheriff Rick Staley. And whereas the parade begins at 6:00 p.m., that would be 1800 naval time, on Saturday, December 3rd, at Waterfront Park. And whereas hundreds of community members line the canals each season, looking forward to cheering a true holiday tradition on the water in Palm Coast. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and the Palm Coast City Council, that Saturday, December 3rd, 2022, is declared as Palm Coast Holiday Boat Parade Day. Signed this day by myself and City Clerk. So we have all, residents, city staff, and city council have been through quite a lot these last several weeks, and there's more to come, make no mistake about it. I hope that you will all join us in celebrating something that is fun, it's wholesome, it's something that highlights one of the most wonderful amenities that we have here in our city. And also, at the same time, we celebrate our new sister city, the Gerald R. Ford. But together, I think that we can continue to grow this Boat Parade, to become a destination Boat Parade for all of Florida. So congratulations. Who would like to speak on the parade? Yes, ma'am. So wait, before that, let me offer you the proclamation.
All right, well, thank you, thank you very much, everyone. (applause). Thank you. I'm Sarah Yulis, proud once again to be the Chair of the Palm Coast Holiday Boat Parade. This is now the 39th year, as the mayor said. The Palm Coast Yacht Club has brought the parade to the city, and I'd like to recognize our Commodore, Daniella Crawford, right here. Last year, as you know, we had a record-setting 74 boats registered for the parade, and this made us the largest community boat parade in the entire state. Maybe Georgia, maybe South Carolina, too, I don't know. I'm going to check that. It's impossible to quantify the numbers of people on the shore cheering on the boats, but from the sound of it, I'm pretty sure it's in the thousands, representing at least three generations of Palm Coasters for whom the parade has been an annual must-do event for 38 and now 39 years. This year, we have 44 boats registered as of this morning, with two and a half weeks to go. And at this time last year, we had 55 boats with two weeks out, but we've also had some storms, and a lot of boats have been taken out and some docks have been compromised. But people are working really hard to get their boats back and back into the parade. So I think we're doing pretty well. And on behalf of the club, I want to thank Mayor Alvin and the City Council for recognizing the parade, and in particular, I'd like to recognize Kendra Ianati, Brittany Kershaw, and Brittany McDermott. And thank you for the use of the Community Center for our pre-Boat Parade party, the first one that we've done, and for the Captain's Safety Meeting the morning of the parade. Your staff at the center has been exceptional and very helpful. And we thank Sheriff Staley and his officers, including Commander Phil Reynolds and Master Deputy Jeff Turner. They're taking some unprecedented steps this year to ensure an even smoother Boat Parade, and we thank them for that, and we're all going to be grateful when we see the results this year. It's going to be much tighter, much smoother. Also supporting us is Flagler Broadcasting airing live, boat by boat, coverage once again from the shore for the fourth year. On-air hosts will be Priscilla Nettis, Linda Cole, and Flagler Broadcasting President David Ayers. And I also want to acknowledge the Palm Coast Observer for its support, both editorial and financially, the Florida Inland Navigational District, Randy Stapelford is here, Commissioner Randy Stapelford, the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission, and of course, Towboat USA, which we hope we don't need to use this year, we haven't so far. This year, as mentioned, the parade is being named in honor of the great late Joe Rizzo. Theresa Rizzo will be in the lead boat, along with Sheriff Staley and Mrs. Staley and Mayor Alvin and Mrs. Alvin. The lead boat this year is Sunshine, a 55-foot wide-body Viking, captained by Palm Coast member, Palm Coast Yacht Club members Donna Heiss and Ken Massey. It's going to be quite spectacular with millions of lights. But all this means very little without the boats. And when you think of it, you think, when you see every parade, you think, well, they can't do any better. And then every year, they manage to do it. Remember the articulated shark? The shark? Remember that one? It's fabulous. So he'll be back with something new this year. We're not sure what it's going to be, a crowd pleaser. And of course, everybody's favorite, Al Cryer. Where are you, Al?
Ah, there he is.
He's been in the parade, he's been in the parade for 22 years straight and counting, and will be in the parade again this year with his rare antique 50-year-old boat, Pilot 49. And so, Mr. Mayor, honour all members of the City Council and citizens of Palm Coast, we look forward to seeing you on the third Palm Coast.
So, Sarah, I think that the message, the message I gleaned from all that you've said this morning, you've thanked so many people that it's obvious it takes a full crew to make this extravaganza work and to maintain our status as number one in the state of Florida. So I think the message again is all hands on deck. If you know someone that has a floating vessel that could participate, please contact Sarah, and we will make this a wonderful experience again.
Actually, you can just visit the Palm Coast website, www.palmcoastyachtclub.com. All the information is there.
Very good, very good. All right, once again, thank you. (applause).
I think I need one of those, Al. I didn't even know those, Al, under there. Better than my polyester wig. Better than my polyester wig.
Yeah, fair.
All right, thank you.
Good. Congratulations. Keep up the good work.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Councilman Finelli will offer the next proclamation, and we're enjoying ourselves today. This one is really very, very important for today and tomorrow. So Councilman Finelli, if you would be so kind.
Good morning. I have the distinct honor and pleasure this morning of presenting a very important proclamation for the city of Palm Coast, one that supports our citizens and our community, both economically and providing goods and services here locally. And that is our Be Local, Buy Local initiative. So at this time, I would like to invite any local business owners to come up here for this proclamation. So if you own a local business here in Palm, city of Palm Coast or Flagler County, come on up. Whereas the city of Palm Coast, Florida, is focused on encouraging residents to be local, buy local, where we promote small local businesses and the contributions they make to our economy and community. And whereas our community receives a portion of three different sales taxes collected when we purchase goods and services locally, last year, the amount of sales tax returned to the city amounted to over $10 million, up from 8.2 million in 2020. And whereas this money helps pay for important community projects such as the community center and Holland Park, it also pays for street improvements, sidewalks, and more. And whereas if every resident of Palm Coast spends $25 at a local business on any given date, it would infuse 1.462 million annually into our local economy. Whereas on November 26th, as the holiday shopping season kicks into high gear, Small Business Saturday will be celebrated by many who are dedicated to supporting small businesses. And whereas, founded by American Express in 2010, this day is celebrated each year on the Saturday after Thanksgiving. Since it started in 2010, consumers have reported spending an estimated $103 billion across all Small Business Saturdays combined. 2022 marks the 13th annual Small Business Saturday. And whereas, according to the U.S. Small Business Administration, most recent figures show there are currently 32.5 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.9% of all businesses with employees in the United States and are responsible for 64% of new jobs created in the United States. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, November 2022, as Be Local, Buy Local Month. Signed this 15th day of November 2022, David Alvin, Mayor of Palm Coast, witnessed by Virginia Smith, city clerk. This is such an important initiative, and this is something that really makes the city of Palm Coast special. We have so many local business owners that provide a unique buying experience to our citizens and provide goods and services here locally. And I'm one that can truly appreciate that because back when we moved here 36 years ago, there weren't a lot of businesses locally, and we had to travel to Volusia or St. John's County in order to purchase goods and services. And now, I don't even have to leave my neighborhood to really have some quality businesses right here in our backyard. So thank you to everybody for making this initiative what it is.
Very good. Ask Councilman Clufus, who is the, has founded his own small businesses, and I think represents a kind of ground-up success that future generations can look forward to. Can you just comment very briefly on that?
Absolutely. I think the current digital economy that we're experiencing offers the ability for residents in Palm Coast not only to start physical brick-and-mortar stores, but I think the opportunity is going to become more and more prevalent for individuals leveraging the digital economy to start having businesses that operate inside of, you know, the digital world that we live in today, and being able to offer services, data services, consulting services from our homes and through brick-and-mortar stores, I think is where the direction of our future is heading economically. And I think the more that we as a city embrace the infrastructure and technologies to make that more feasible and to make that dream easier for individuals to realize, I think we'll experience more success as a city. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, and I hope everyone again appreciates the, not the importance, but it's the small business community that allows everything else to take place and to happen for the future. So again, congratulations, and thank you all for the hard work and effort that you have put into your individual businesses. I know there are rough times, and we can only hope that the city will find additional ways in the future to attract more small businesses and assist those that are here to be successful. So thank you again for that. That concludes the presentations and proclamations for this morning, so we'll move on to item G on the agenda, which is ordinances for a second, no, I'm sorry, for ordinances. And out of courtesy to the public, people that may have attended for item number H7, I will ask city council to read that item into the record, please.
Thank you, mayor. Again, this is item number seven on the agenda for the rezoning application number 5132, the Harbor Side MPD, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, providing for the amendment of the official zoning map as established in section 2.06 of the City of Palm Coast Unified Land Development Code, amending the official zoning map for 17.64 plus or minus acres of certain real property generally located at the east and northeast sides of the intersection between Clubhouse Drive and Palm Harbor Parkway, and being more particularly described in the attached exhibit A, from Harbor Side Inn and Marina Planned Unit Development, PUD, to Master Plan Development, MPD Zoning District, approving the Harbor Side Master Plan Development Agreement, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and providing for an effective date. Mayor, we received a request from the applicant to continue this matter to a date certain in the future, but the city council dates have not been fully set yet, so we'd ask that this matter, and staff would ask that this matter be continued, and we will re-notice it to the date and time when this will be heard.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor, hold on one second.
We need a motion to continue and second and vote.
So Councilman Danko has made a motion to continue to a future date, and Vice Mayor Brankino has seconded the motion. Is there any additional discussion on this motion from city council? Would open up this motion to the public. Are there any members of the public that would like to make comment on this agenda item at this time? Introduce yourself, I'm sorry, can you pull the microphone towards you? That's it, that's okay. Thank you.
Irene Bellavine, regarding the Harbor Side, I am the owner of the condominium of Palm Coast Resort. Majority of our owners are really concerned about safety. And I would like, because you will think, you will decide what to do with Harbor Side development, please think about our problem. Because as you know, VVC Company will build, plan to build the building, rental building for 200,000 units. Each unit is 1,200 square feet, and this is a family, family likely with kids, so it will be two or three cars. So we're talking about 400 cars only for this building, plus 30 townhouses, plus hotel for 125 cars, plus our building, 72 units, and plus a legacy resort hotel. That's, we're talking about 700 cars, 700, on that small local road of the one entrance and one exit, one line, one lane, about six feet each, and a very short distance. How this amount of cars can go in and out to the area? That's absolutely impossible. I know all of you are really concerned about safety of our people, of our residents in Palm Coast. So the VVC Company needs to revise the plan, that's for sure. Maybe as we, majority of our client really respect VVC business, but they have to decide, maybe it will be the condominium building, and it will be less cars, maybe we don't need two hotels on the small area, and it will be less cars. Let's imagine if something happened like fire in the building, and people need to escape. It's absolutely impossible to escape from that area, and that will be the problem, that will be the disaster. So, and we are actually, and our building, it's in reality, community's 55-plus, and if some small even accident happened, car accident, and that particular small roads, no emergency car can come to the area or leave to the area. So please, member of the council, seriously think and revise the plan of Harbor Side development and help all our residents to be safe.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public that would like to comment on this agenda item at this time?
Steve Carr, Palm Coast, I also worry about traffic that's being added to Palm Harbor, because usually that traffic that is added to Palm Harbor ends up on Florida Park Drive a lot. And so I've always been concerned about that. We have a residential area, and if we multiply the cars per day by what FDOT reports, it's over 3 million cars a year in a residential area, 60 feet from children's bedrooms, 80 feet from children playing basketball on Holland Park basketball courts. I think it's very dangerous. There's too many health organizations that have put a lot of time and a lot of money into studying close proximity traffic to homes and prolonged exposure to traffic, fumes and dust. And they've done this over 20 and 30 years of studies, so they know what they're talking about. So those dangers are real, they're not made up. Get the actual reports, facts, the scientific studies, and read them, they're just real. So I am worried about additional traffic on Palm Harbor, which will eventually find its way on Florida Park Drive. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address city council on this agenda item at this time? Seeing no one approach the podium, I'll close public comment and come back to the dais. Do city councils have any final comments before we vote?
Is this a judicial matter?
No.
Well, it is, but we're continuing it, so yeah.
Just in case if we get to.
Yeah, if you're continuing, you can disclose ex parte.
So it's a continuation. So I would just ask all city council members in favor of continuing the item as motioned, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Does the clerk have the, thank you. Councillor, if you would, go ahead and read the next item, it would be ordinances under second reading, first item into the record, please.
Yes, thank you, mayor. This is item number five on the agenda for Whiteview U.S. One Comprehensive Plan Amendment, application number 5190, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, providing for the amendment of the city of Palm Coast 2035 Comprehensive Plan, as previously amended pursuant to section 163 Florida statutes, amending the future land use map designation for 30 plus or minus acres of certain real property, from Flagler County designation of agriculture and timberlands and conservation, to city of Palm Coast designations of mixed use and conservation, as described in more detail in the legal description, which is an exhibit to this ordinance, providing for conflicts, ratification of prior acts, codification, severability, and an effective date.
Thank you, councillor.
And mayor, I'll just note, this is a comprehensive plan amendment, so it is a legislative matter.
Councillor? Any?
None. Nope.
Oh, no, it's legislative, so we don't have to disclose the next one. Are we, well, I'll read the next one to the record next, so.
Mr. Papa?
Mayor, members of city council, I really don't have anything else from what you heard from the first reading, I'm just here to answer any additional questions that you or the public might have. As a brief review, this 30-acre parcel is on the west side of U.S. One, where Whiteview Parkway ends, and it is surrounded by light industrial uses and some vacant lands. And as, just again, to quickly review our recommendation, the change is from the county designations of agriculture and conservation to city of Palm Coast designations of mixed use and conservation, with an expansion of the conservation area. And again, we found this to be consistent with the comprehensive plan and recommend it, and the planning board has recommended that city council approve this proposed future land use map amendment.
Thank you. Did you have a comment?
Just a comment, a comment on this. I hope that this is actually the beginning of the balance of Palm Coast, east-west, we need to. I would love to, you know, encourage my colleagues to encourage developers out there to start developing on the west side, so we could balance Palm Coast. East side of Palm Coast right now, it's getting overcrowded. If the other side could take some of that, you know, that work and that traffic and all of those things, even the hospital that we have there right now. So I tell you one thing, I wish that instead of 30 acres should be 300 or 3,000 acres of developing on the west side in order to balance. So congratulations to the developer that's doing this, and I hope that they do a lot more on the west side of Palm Coast.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other comments from city council? With that, I would ask, are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this agenda item at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close public comment. Any final comments from city council? Then I would ask for a motion.
Approval.
I have a motion from Councilman Finelli, and a second from Vice Mayor Brankino. I would ask for a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Brankino?
Yes.
Councilmember Danko?
Yes.
Councilmember Finelli?
Yes.
Councilmember Clufus?
Affirmative.
Mayor Alvin?
Yes.
Passes 5 to 0.
We now move on to item number G6, councillor, if you would read that into the record for us, please.
Thank you, mayor. This is the Whiteview U.S. One zoning map amendment for application number 5192, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, providing for the amendment of the official zoning map as established in section 2.06 of the City of Palm Coast Unified Land Development Code, amending the zoning designation for approximately 30 plus or minus acres from Flagler County designation of agriculture to city of Palm Coast designation of high-intensity commercial, COM3, and preservation, PRS. Subject property is more particularly described in exhibit A and graphically depicted in exhibit B, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for non-codification, and providing for an effective date. City council, this is a quasi-judicial matter, so if you've had any ex parte communications since our last meeting on this item, since the first reading, please disclose some now.
Councillor? I have not.
None whatsoever.
None. Councillor, none. We have not had none.
Thank you again, mayor, and members of city council. Again, this is the second part of the necessary changes from the county designations to the city designations in order to city designations in order to proceed with the next step in developing this property, which will likely be a site plan approval. Similar to the comprehensive plan amendment, we find that the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan. And the planning board did hold a public hearing and recommended City Council approve the proposed amendment from the county designation of agriculture to City of Palm Coast designation of high-intensity commercial and preservation.
Questions or comments from City Council on this item?
Go back to the recording. I repeat the same thing that I just said before.
Okay, that's fine. Ditto. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on the second item at this time?
Good morning again, George Mayo, Palm Coast. Recently at a county commission meeting, I was speaking about the parking density as they had with Planet Fitness and all the shops over there. And if anybody visits there, it is absolutely impossible to find a parking space. People circle around, circle around. Now, I'm very unfamiliar with this, but you say high density commercial. What does that mean? If it's a doctor's office, a dentist's office, you aren't going to have that many parking spaces needed. But if you know something like Planet Fitness and restaurants are going in, you're going to need more parking spaces available. I don't know what the regulations are now, how many parking spaces per square foot is needed. But if you know something like that is going in, maybe we need to amend it or add on to it. Because going over to the pizza place, there are people parking on Airport Road. They park on... I've seen them park on 100 to go in and get food, and that's a dangerous situation. So depending on what is going in, just don't automatically stamp, okay, these businesses could share 10 spaces and that's all they needed, and find out that each business needs 20 spaces for its own business. So just look forward to this. If you know what is going in, you may have to amend the parking space agreements. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you for your comment. Any other members of the public would like to address this issue to City Council at this time? Seeing no one approach the podium, I will close public comment. Mr. Pope, I do have one question. It's not directly related to the item, but is there an initiative underway to further align the codes and zoning requirements between the city and the county? And the reason I'm asking is we are soon to open up our comprehensive plan for updates and reviews, and I'm really asking, would it be, would that be an appropriate time to have that discussion as we're reviewing the comprehensive plan?
Yes, sir, absolutely. It's always, when you do update your comprehensive plan, it is always best practice to coordinate with your surrounding municipalities, whether it's unincorporated Flagler County, Flagler Beach, or Bonnell. And that would be the appropriate time, well, it's always an appropriate time to have the conversation and dialogue about ongoing and upcoming development. And we do exchange information on proposed projects with Flagler County, but as we update our comprehensive plan, it is definitely the inappropriate time to further look at each other's comprehensive plan and bring them closer to, or sync and make sure that they're at least not... One of the requirements when reviewing a comprehensive plan is that it should not be inconsistent with your neighboring communities. And there is an inter-local government element within the comprehensive plan that requires you to coordinate those issues.
Good. So we'll be looking to consider items like zoning and density and find a way to collaborate, align them, so that people can look at our entire area and...
Absolutely, sir.
With some consistency and purpose well-designed for the future and to smartly manage the growth that we expect in the future as well.
Absolutely. Yes, sir. Especially where you have areas of common interest, like certainly at the border areas here where we have an unincorporated Flagler County to the north of us, making sure that this development aligns with the plans and how their code reads is always important.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I just want to tell Mr. Mayo, that's exactly what you said. That's exactly why I think the balance is needed between east and west. And by the way, thank you for the kind words you had when you saw me the other day at the Walmart. Thank you, sir.
Any additional comments? Very good. With that, then I would ask, I have a motion from Vice Mayor Brankino to approve. I have a second from Councilman Finelli. Any further discussion by City Council? Then I would ask for a roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Brankino?
Yes.
Councilmember Danko?
Yes.
Councilmember Finelli?
Yes.
Councilmember Clufus?
Yes.
Mayor Alvin?
Yes.
Passes 5 to 0.
Thank you. We now move on to Agenda Section J, which are resolutions. So Resolution Number Eight. Counselor, if you would...
Yes, this is Agenda Section Number I. Now, Item Number Eight, which is the authorization to initiate legal proceedings for the Holland Park Splash Pad. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, authorizing Trevor Arnold Esquire of Gray Robinson, PA, to initiate legal proceedings relating to the Holland Park Splash Pad, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for implementing actions, and providing for an effective date. And we have Mr. Arnold here and Carl Coat to present this item.
Yes, sir. I'm just going to ask you, can you frame this item for us so we understand the purpose of this presentation today?
Sure. This is a follow-up to the ongoing information you've been receiving regarding the construction defects at the Holland Park Splash Pad. And I'm sure Mr. Arnold will get into this, but we went to a pre-suit mediation that resulted in a non-settlement position. And so now we need to take the next step, and to do that, City Council needs to provide their authorization, provide the authorization for the city to take that next step.
So this is an update on the results of the mediation that took place? That's what we're talking about here today, so we're clear.
That and authorization to take the next step to file suit, because that has not been done yet.
Very good. And that's what the presentation will be?
Yes.
Perfect. Please.
Good morning. So Trevor Arnold, outside counsel for the city from Gray Robinson. We proceeded forward with mediation over the last month. In anticipation of that, as expected, we worked with city staff as well as outside experts and the engineer hired by the city for the design process to provide updated damages estimates to the involved parties. As you know, we have engaged in destructive testing and removal of the PIP material so that we could ascertain what the substrate looks like and whether that was constructed appropriately, sloped appropriately. So that way we'd be able to approach a resolution knowing that we have a clear handle on the scope, method, and cost of repair. Because when there's a resolution, you can't go back later if you start taking things apart and realize it's going to be more entailed. So we did those things in anticipation of mediation. We put out a damages package. We worked with our consultants, with an architectural consultant, an engineer, and a contractor to provide scope, method, and cost of those repairs. We invited all involved parties. Most of the parties did attend the mediation and did participate in the mediation. Ultimately, we reached an impasse, which is a non-settlement. And I will say, after outlining damages in excess of $1.4 million representing some cost incurred and also cost to be incurred as part of the repairs, as well as loss of use, the combined offer from the five parties was a very small fraction of that, less than 10%, leaving us with little choice but to proceed. Since the mediation, we did further invoke rights against the Performance Bond Surety, who did not attend the mediation. And so we have moved forward with termination of the construction contract to fully trigger rights under the bond. And the surety is now further investigating. We plan to include them in the lawsuit. So the lawsuit would be against design and construction team and surety, and as well as the supplier of the product. We anticipate the contractor would bring in some other parties. The lawsuit is prepared and ready. The design is getting finalized by the outside engineer. And while we have received some follow-up from a few of the parties, not all of the parties since mediation, with a resolution focus, we believe the latest proposals received are still insufficient for a variety of reasons. Number one, they do not represent compensating the city for cost incurred, and there have been substantial cost incurred with experts and engineering assessments and destructive testing. And also, it lacks sufficient detail about how they're going to fix this, any different than it was performed initially. Essentially, we'll go out there and put the same product. And so comprehensively, we've analyzed that with our, with city staff as well as consultants, and they feel the latest proposals, some of which we received information last Friday, is still vastly insufficient to address the issues. While we want to maintain some resolution efforts and continue to explore those, at this point in time, we simply have not made sufficient progress that would warrant not proceeding with the lawsuit. So we do want to move forward with the lawsuit. We had to go through the mediation in order to meet contractual requirements to mediate prior to filing the lawsuit, and we were hopeful that we would achieve a resolution. Unfortunately, that did not occur. So I'm here today to update on the mediation process and to ask for confirmation that we can proceed with filing the lawsuit against the parties to hold them accountable for the cost incurred and to be incurred to address these deficiencies. The park remains closed and is fenced up, and we want to ultimately get the park fixed and/or explore other options at a later date.
So thank you for the update. Two things. One, you finished by saying the park is still closed. The one part I didn't hear was a inclusion of the value lost by our residents over this very extended period of time. It's my assumption that that would be a part of what you do, what you demand going forward via the lawsuit process.
Yes, that will be a component of the damages included in the lawsuit, both lost revenue from rental as well as the loss of use of the park, which is probably even more important to the city than the lost rental.
Thank you. And also, one second. And City Manager, this process, I assume doesn't represent a surprise. You're prepared, and this was sort of built into your original forecasting for this particular item?
Yes, Mayor. I've been abreast of all the steps, and this is in line with staff's understanding and preparedness to move it forward.
Councilmembers, comment?
Yeah, I want to just repeat what the mayor said. I think the loss of use to our citizens, to our taxpayers, is something that needs to be a part of this lawsuit. Just out of, I've got just a few questions moving forward, and I know litigation takes time, lots of time. What are we looking at? Rough estimate. And I know that can change, but...
So it's a phased process, of course, you know, getting all the parties served and into the lawsuit, and then ultimately getting a case management plan and a trial order with the court. We would look to try to get a trial next calendar year, and so that would be our goal. The court may require another mediation prior to trial, and of course, there's discovery and depositions. But there would be various milestones through that year process to see if we could resolve with all or some of the parties. So just filing the lawsuit doesn't mean we go all the way to the finish line, but it's certainly the next step to try to bring this closer.
We're looking at a year or more.
I think we would be looking at a year if it runs the entire duration of the process and if we can't resolve things. Most cases get resolved before trial, but otherwise, we would be looking at approximately a year for a trial.
That trial would be in Flagler County?
Yes, it would.
Okay. To date, how much have we spent in legal fees and what do we anticipate to be spending if we go that year?
So we have, there's Martin Aquatic, who was hired separately as part of the Gray Robinson legal expense. That includes an architect and an engineer that have been included in those expenses at no markup, but we have coordinated those efforts. But I believe, based upon all the destructive testing and the site visits and the mediation processes, I think we're approximately $50,000 spent over the last year as part of the Holland Park efforts.
And we could probably anticipate in legal fees moving forward, another 50, 60,000?
I think to take it through the next phases of activities, which will occur over several months with starting the discovery process and potentially a follow-up mediation, it would, I do anticipate more if we ultimately have to go to trial. But as the parameters of the litigation are defined, we can work out budgets for future updates.
Okay. And I assume we're obviously going to be asking for all of our legal fees back.
We do have, we have included a request for attorney's fees and costs. That will be part of the claim to seek recruitment of those fees.
And is this something where we can seek additional damages? I mean, obviously, we want our money back. We want to fix the park, whatever. But, and the loss of use, but is there any sort of punitive damages we can seek to basically send that message that this is not what you do in business? This is not how you treat?
So the lawsuit typically outlines categories of damages, and we will include the loss of use and the repair cost and cost incurred, attorney's fees and costs. Those will all be outlined. We're not required to include a specific number in the complaint. Those are disclosed through the discovery process, even though we have disclosed numbers already. There is a procedural process to seek punitive damages if that were the direction we ultimately take. We are not going through that process with the initial filing. That is something we can assess at a later time.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Councilman, I agree. The only thing I object to is the reference that we've spent. So I'm not willing to take ownership for those expenses. I'm going to make an assumption that they're all recoverable, and that certainly is the target. So I agree with you, but that's, yeah, okay. Councilman Finelli?
We would also include in that the amount of hours incurred by city staff working to, working on this project as well, because they've taken a lot of their time to go out there and meet companies and do things, and that's paid city staff hours. So I would assume those would be included as well.
We will include that in the lawsuit requested relief as a category of damages.
Okay. This is also one of the first things that came up on the agenda eight-plus months ago when I first started as councilman here. And I think we have two issues. I think truly we need to move forward with what needs to be done to hold people accountable for what has happened. But I also think that we need to get this reopened and not a year from now after all of the legal proceedings go through. Is there any way to repair or get the splash pad back to operational prior to litigation? Or do we have to wait until all of this is done to fix the splash pad?
So we do not have to wait for the conclusion of the litigation process, and there are efforts to get additional information to come back before the council so that informed decisions can be made about those options. We don't have all of the data yet on what that would look like, but that is a priority to make sure that steps are being taken so that the park can be opened by the time of the next season. And city staff is working hard with the engineers in order to move forward with that. But I don't think that's ripe for a detailed discussion today.
Understood. Understood. Thank you.
Vice Mayor? I just want to say that we entered this deal in good faith. We did everything by the book in good faith. As far as I'm concerned, the city did nothing wrong to go through what we're going through and putting our kids out there, our most valuable prize out there, our kids, taking away something that they love. Okay? I had a bunch of questions, but I know that anything that I say here, or any of us say here, will be used against us on that litigation, if it becomes litigation. So I have to be very careful with any questions I would ask. But there's one that I, I'm hoping that we suing everybody across the board, no mercy on this case, because they had no mercy on us, and they're showing it. And hopefully compensatory and punitive. It's, in my opinion, they deserve it. And you said something that struck my attention. Most parties attended mediation. Are you at liberty to talk which party didn't show at the mediation?
So the, I believe I mentioned the surety...
If you can and will not, okay.
Yeah, I mentioned that the surety did not participate in the mediation. But the other parties were there. We don't think that they were necessarily where we expected them to be, and some carriers did not necessarily participate. But, you know, the primary parties, other than the surety, did, you know, come. But obviously, we were unsuccessful in the resolution.
And thank you for bringing it up to us. I don't want the people out there actually to start thinking that this is created by you. I don't want the people out there actually start thinking that this is created by your company in order to create a bunch of billing hours. I don't think it's the case. I think you're doing a very decent job for what I know. Keep up the good word, and if it's up to me, let's go to the end and make sure that those that have no consideration for our kids will pay dearly. Thank you.
And I will just add that we had initially hoped to mediate sooner. There was a request to make sure that the parties that needed to be at the mediation had sufficient information, so we worked for many months to give them all the information they needed to make informed decisions, and if we made it much more progress, where I thought an end was in sight resolution-wise, where we could hold off doing the lawsuit, then I would be here reporting that. But the fact that they were so far under where we needed to be, I mean, under 10%, that there's just no choice that we need to move forward at this point.
Councilman Clovis, any comments?
I will keep my comments brief. I don't want to compromise anything as far as the lawsuit goes, but I would concur with my colleagues that the city has done everything in our means and as a council to try to prioritize, making sure that all the information is available to all parties. We we have the expert who came in, we did destruction testing and making sure that we knew exactly where our assessment was and what it's going to take to bring this back to a level of usability. And I concur with everything that was said, that they're really, they're taking something away from Palm Coast that makes, you know, Palm Coast a phenomenal place to be, and I don't, I don't want to pontificate, oh, I thought there was a fire truck in here. I don't want to pontificate too much further and compromise any of the, you know, proceedings, but I fully support your position, and thank you for coming here and telling us today that we have to go to litigation, and I know that it was our counsel and your hope that we would be able to provide all that information necessary to have a good faith effort for them to make right on the situation, but here we are, so I support moving forward in this direction.
Thank you, councilman. And city manager, I would just ask that at at the earliest possible date, you staff would deliver a a presentation on the options that could include opening the park at the earliest possible date despite the proceedings? In other words, two different tracks here? When when that information is available to your staff, you'll come back to us and present, hey, this is how we could move forward with the park, you know, separately from the litigation process?
Absolutely.
Very good. Okay, thank you.
And just one more, one more note. That was originally where I had intended to go with my comments, that if we can tear all this up and just have concrete pad and just allow for some type of usage in the future, I know we're not going to discuss that today, but I'm with you that we need to figure out a creative solution to be able to open the sucker back up. So thank you.
Thank you, councilman. All right, with that, I would open up this item, I'm sorry, Carl, do you have any additional comments? All right, thank you. I would open up this item for public comment at this time. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this agenda item at this time? Yes, sir.
Michael Arnold, Palm Coast. Would this be eligible for community?
Please.
Okay, to you, yeah, I messed that one up. Okay. Would this be eligible for community residents to piggyback on this, forming a class? Is that something you can direct to council?
So, councillor, is that a question that you're able to answer? Do you want to?
Go ahead. What, can you say that again? What are you asking?
Okay, so basically, individuals have been impacted by the community. There was children hurt on the park. Okay, would that be eligible for these community and for these individuals within the community to work with this current council to basically form a class action against these companies involved?
The city's suit with contractors is based on construction defects. Now, you're saying that there was an injury that occurred as a result of those?
Yeah, one of my daughter's classmates tripped and fell, busted his chin open on the splash pad because of one of those bubbles that formed on the splash pad. So I'm just, and I know that there was other individuals that were injured as well because of faulty things. Would these individuals that were impacted by this through the construction failures, would they be eligible to work with councils in order to form a class action against these institutions that built it?
I I don't think that a class action is the appropriate method to address those claims. We need to go through our process to try to get to the end of this and find some resolution and some accountability for these, but anyone that's had an issue in the past, those can be brought individually.
Individually? Okay, thank you very much.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to discuss or reference this item at this time with city council?
Motion to initiate this legal procedure.
I'll second it.
So a motion and a second. Is there any future additional discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Brankino?
Yes.
Councilmember Danko?
Yes.
Councilmember Finelli?
Yes.
Councilmember Clovis?
Yes.
Mayor Alvin?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We now move on to the next resolution, councillor.
Yes, this is item number nine on the agenda. This is a resolution for fiscal year 2021, 2022, a disaster reserve budget amendment, a resolution of the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, amending the fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget relating to the disaster reserve fund expenditures, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for implementing actions, and providing for an effective date.
So, good morning.
Ms. Alves.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor, council. When we prepared the fiscal year 2022 revised budget, we did not budget for hurricanes or natural disasters. So as we're closing out our fiscal year 2022, we need this budget amendment in order to record the expenditures that were incurred. Now, this is just for fiscal year 2022. That is not all the cost that we have. 2023 will come to you when we do our revised budget.
Any questions from city council at this time?
Coming from you?
Yeah.
I trust the utmost.
I have none. Then I would open it up for the public. Any members of the public like to comment on this item at this time?
Robert McDonald, Palm Coast. Did I just hear the representative from the city state that we didn't, as a city, we didn't budget any money for disasters of any sort, like hurricanes or whatever? Did I hear you say that?
Ms. Alves, go ahead, answer me.
So, okay, so we have reserves for hurricanes, but we don't actually budget expenditures to spend until we have the event.
Why?
So, Mr. McDonald, so the reserves are in place in anticipation of unknown entities, whether they be storms, natural disasters, or some other kind of disaster. There's no way to predict what that disaster might be, but the reserves are there, so the funding is available. When we actually do spend the money, then we have to add the detail to what it was spent on.
How much money is in the reserve?
Well, the budget's been available since it was approved and off, can you speak to the the value of the reserve?
Sure. Currently, our disaster reserve fund has approximately $3 million.
$3 million?
That is correct.
Okay. So how much of that did we use in 2021? I'm sorry, 2022, how much of it did we use?
So for 2022, out of the disaster reserve fund, we have approximately half a million dollars of expenditures. Now, category B for Hurricane Ian is reimbursable at 100%, so we are expecting to receive those funds back from FEMA once they process reimbursement. So it'll be used to replenish what we have spent.
So we used most of the reserves, or a good percentage of the reserves, and now we have to wait to get the money back?
No, sir, that's not what I heard. I heard half a million dollars was spent on $3 million in reserves.
Oh, okay. Okay. As long as we got money in the pot.
Very good. Are there any other members of the public that would like to comment at this time on this item? Then I will close public comment. Back to the dais, any additional discussion?
Motion to approve this budget amendment.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor Van Brankino and a second from Councilman Danko. A roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Brankino?
Yes.
Councilmember Danko?
Yes.
Councilmember Finelli?
Yes.
Councilmember Clovis?
Yes.
Mayor Alvin?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Councillor, if you would move to the next item for us.
This is agenda item number 10, the London Waterway Cost Share Agreement with the St. John's River Water Management District, a resolution of the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, approving the cost share grant agreement with the St. John's River Water Management District for for the construction of the London Waterway Expansion Project, authorizing the city manager or designated to execute said grant agreement, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for implementing actions, and providing for an effective date.
Yes.
Mr. Coates, grants are good. Go ahead.
Okay, this particular project, London Waterway, is part of our enhanced stormwater program. It is part of our overall master plan. We know the north end of our city, we are looking for ways to expand our stormwater storage capacity. This item has been presented to council several times. We have completed the design, the project is out to bid, and as part of that process, we we obviously are seeking grants to help fund the construction, and this was one of the grants that we went after. We were awarded a grant. It is a matching grant, I believe, in the amount of 25%. So they'll they'll match up to nine, just over $900,000, which is about 25% of the overall anticipated project cost.
Good. Thank you. And I underscore the the concept of grants. I'm not sure that the the public is aware that almost all of your projects attempt to locate, identify, and acquire some form of grant, and that doesn't get published or promoted or publicized enough, because I know the public wants to make sure that city council is getting its fair share or making demands of its fair share from the state or the federal government, depending on where the the grant is coming from. So appreciate your efforts and congratulations on the success of acquiring this grant. Are there comments from members of city council or questions?
Good job.
I'd like to thank Carl and his team for for going after this grant and bringing in just shy of $1 million to to help make our city better. Thank you so much.
I agree.
Say good.
Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this agenda item at this time? Seeing none, I'll close public comment, and I
Move to.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor Brankino to
I'll second it.
approve, and a second from Councilman Finelli. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Coates. We now move to the consent agenda, and do I have to ask if the public wants to?
Yes.
Are there any items within the consent agenda that the public would like to discuss or take issue with this morning? Yes, sir?
Item number 11. The city, hopefully, is going to vote to provide to the fire department 20 sets of turnout gear. Now, I don't know the exact cost of a set of turnout gear, but I know it's pricey. I've been around so long that I was one of the first firefighters in New Jersey to wear bunker gear, bunker pants, and everybody laughed at me until we went to a brush dryer. And when everybody else's legs were burning up because they had rubber boots on, I was plowing through it because I had bunker gear on. I'm pretty determined to get the fire department as much new gear as they need. If we can spend, I just heard that we're going to spend almost $100,000 for a lawsuit for new rubber on a park, maybe we should take that $100,000 and buy these guys new So I have a problem with 20 sets of gear. Whatever Chief Berryhill comes and tells you he needs, find the money, and if you give him a hard time about giving him the money, we're going to fight tooth and nail to make sure that Chief Berryhill gets the gear that he needs, because I think 20 sets of gear is a ridiculously low number when you have no problem spending $100,000 on a lawsuit that we might not win. Remember, these are the guys that are going to possibly save you your lives.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public that would like to comment on the consent agenda at this time? Seeing no one approach the podium, I will come back to city council for comment or discussion on the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as it is.
I have a motion to approve. Second, is there any additional discussion? I would add, I would make a footnote before we vote, that an item like this on the consent agenda originates from our fine firefighting department. So this is not something that
And one more note, Councilman Danko, would you mind if I, for posterity, were to make the last second of Councilman Vice Mayor Brankino's motion to pass the consent agenda as read?
Be my guest.
Privileged. I second the motion by Vice Mayor Brankino.
We have a second, we finished
You owe me one.
Deal.
We finished discussion, and let's, all right, let's let's return back, because the public comment was important, that we do everything that we can to make sure, and we work hand in hand with our fire service, our fire department, to make sure that they are able to protect every one of our residents in the city of Palm Coast, and I think everyone up here on the dais will agree as well. So thank you for your comment. With that, I would ask for a roll call vote to make it official, so that Mr. Clovis knows that he has made that second, and go ahead.
Vice Mayor Brankino?
Yes.
Councilmember Danko?
Yes.
Councilmember Finelli?
Yes.
Councilmember Clovis?
Yes.
Mayor Alvin?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
So with that, we move on to final public participation. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on an item not previously discussed in the agenda today? Yes, sir?
Ed Fuller, Palm Coast. Honorable Alvin, Dave Alvin, apologize. Honorable Vice Mayor Brankino, honorable Nick Clovis, honorable John Finelli, honorable Ed Danko. I just want to thank the city for the solemn ceremony for the veterans that took place over there at Flagler Auditorium. It was well, well done. It was very, very solemn and very dignifying. Mayor, thank you for your comments. I want to thank the city of Palm Coast for providing the lunch for the veterans. That was certainly appreciated, and not for for me to tell you all what to do, but that venue is outstanding over there for, because of we have weather and people my age, I guess, you need to sit down more comfortable seats in a climate controlled. It was outstanding. So I thank you for honoring the veterans the way you do. Thank you, Ms. Bevan, I really appreciate that. Also, I wonder if you'd consider dredging the canals if we can get the USS 004 down there for boat parade?
Yes.
If it's the biggest baddest ship, would it not be appropriate for them to lead the boat parade? Just saying. Maybe you could do it by unanimous consent. My bride's going to kill me.
Yeah.
That said,
Sorry, hon.
On a serious note, Vice Mayor Brankino, I want to say I love you. Thank you for your service to our community under the most difficult and trying circumstances a human being could be put upon. I just want to say thank you, thank you for your servant mentality, for all your knowledge, your depth, and even some of your, I guess, outbursts. Why? You're passionate. There's nothing wrong with that, and I just want to say thank you very, very much. Councilman Finelli, same to you. The personal sacrifice that you have given under the trying circumstances you have been under, just unbelievable. I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for that servant mentality. It was just amazing. Also, I wanted, I'd like to thank Patrick Giuliano for the solemn and wonderful Also, I wanted, I'd like to thank Patrick Giuliano for the solemn and wonderful send-off to one of our heroes who lost his life, firefighter Gammon. Thank you so much. Thank you for all you do. God bless you and let, let's talk about that dredging for the USS Gerald Ford, okay? Thank you very much. God bless you.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public that would like to comment, uh, finally today?
Yeah, one more time. Blunt the hack, you know? Robert McDonald, Palm Coast. My wife always accuses me of, uh, not thanking people when they do a good job. This past Saturday, I was coming home from work. I was traveling down Royal Palm and a city worker came flying past me, crossed over the yellow line, cut me off, cut another car off, and came flying down Royal Palm going westbound towards US 1. Well, unfortunately, I couldn't call anybody. I couldn't get the plate number because otherwise he probably would have been in the green roof end. So yesterday morning, I called what I thought was the right call. I called, uh, Public, uh, Public Works and the director assured me that it wasn't Public Works, it was Parks and Rec, Recreation. And the director of Park and Recreation checked into it. They found the individual, they did what they had to do, but I'd like to publicly thank the directors for doing the right job and possibly avoiding a serious issue. Now, in the minute and 40 seconds I have left, I, I know I kind of roused Councilman McQuino, but I am going to miss him, uh, because we've had numerous conversations over different topics and he hasn't always agreed with me and I haven't always agreed with him, but that's what happens when, uh, two ball-headed guys get together in the same room. But Vice Mayor, I wish you the very best and, uh, if you decide to come back, uh, I'll be the first one right behind you because you've done a great job. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other comments, uh, from the public, uh, this morning? Then I will close public comment. I will come back to the dais for city council comments. City councilmen, are there any final comments for today?
I have none.
Uh, just one, uh, the boat parade that's coming up. It, it's something that I've enjoyed since, since the mid eighties, 36 years ago when we moved here. It was something that we looked forward to every year as a family, me and my brother and my sister. It was a great day just coming out and, and we'd spend the whole day there just waiting for the boat parade, waiting for it to get dark, asking my parents, you know, what time? When is it going to get dark? When's the parade going to start? And, um, we've enjoyed that now for so many years. And it's even more special now that I get to bring my kids back to that event and share that experience and provide them with those same great memories that I have growing up here in Palm Coast. So we're looking forward to it this year as a family and it's going to be a, a fun time.
Thank you, Councilman. Vice Mayor?
Well, uh, a minute. Okay. And the reason being is this, even though my term is going to finish on the 15th of next month, today is my last day behind this dais. You're, you're next. And I just have a couple of things to say. First of all, uh, I would like to thank my colleagues to putting up with my sometimes bad attitudes, but I want you to know that I did this from the bottom of my heart. I was never a fake. What you saw, that's what you've got. And the decisions I made behind this dais came from my heart and that's what I thought was the best for the people of Palm Coast, which was the most important thing. I don't believe in special people. I believe in special situations and I believe my colleagues here believe the same thing. Mission accomplished, my friends. I did it with honesty, integrity, and proud of it. I do not regret anything that I said. I would like to thank the new candidates. I had an opportunity to speak with both of them, uh, and I wish today was the day you were taking over, but unfortunately, uh, uh, it couldn't be done. I gave you my pep talk. I gave you my opinion and as you know, and I'm pretty sure you felt it, it was sincere. To all, every single one of the directors of this department, I am so proud, so proud of you. As of today, you even saw something, another award. You guys are award winners, every single one of you. I mean, there are two, there are two that were a little, that I felt that I needed to help a little bit more, which is Public Works, never, never hit that away, and Parks and Recreation because of the golf course that was taking a beating, but we have the right people taking care of it right now. We have the right people taking care of it. So this golf course, there's many thousands rounds that we have soon. Right now is the best public course probably in, 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 in the northeast Florida, I venture to say. One special word to the fire department. Chief, you have no idea what this means, just for the two of us, okay? This means so much. This is going to be as close as to my heart ever. Sheriff out there, my goodness, congratulations, Sheriff. The approval rating you got, I think you could run for president because you're good. You're doing a good job and I wish we could have done more for you. And if we didn't, I'm so sorry we didn't. There are people that you grow, that you meet here, that you grow to love. One of them, with all due respect, and I'm not, I'm only singling them out because I grew close to them. One was Al Cryer. I still want to get him in the golf course and have that chance. And the other one is you, my friend, McDonald. I thought you were going to really turn me off today, really going to do something to me that I figured that you're going to, but you got me laughing and that's the main thing. I never forget the conversations we had, even when you worried about the fruit that I was looking for at your place of work. And you did it though, but you did it. Very important. I wish that we were picking a vice mayor today because I would like to vote for my colleague, Nick Clufus, because he's the most, with all due respect, he's the most experienced, uh, um, councilman over here, but unfortunately we can't. Carl Code, East Section, that drainage, what a job. Phenomenal. With all the water we had right now, not even, the water didn't even puddle around, what before used to come on most of my garage. That job, phenomenal. You and your team did a great, great job. Other than, uh, that, I just, uh, due to the fact that I'm not going to be here personally, I want to wish everybody, everybody happy Thanksgiving and for those of you, just in case if I can't make that Zoom, uh, uh, meeting, Thanksgiving for all of you and every single one of you out there, especially the directors, my number is available. If you ever need anything that I could help with, as long as it's legal and ethical, please do not hesitate. And I'm leaving with you in my heart. I mean it. Thank you, all of you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
And thank you to my colleagues. Once again, I think I did that the first.
Very good.
Absolutely.
Councilman Clufus?
For sure. And I'll just piggyback briefly on those comments. Um, one, Councilman Finelli, thank you for stepping up in a time of uncertainty when we needed someone who was steadfast and your comments today really made me, uh, feel that you embody what we're trying to build in Palm Coast. We're trying to have legacy families here who take part of the traditions today, grow up 30 years and have kids and they're standing in the same place where they were with their parents and that really touched me. Um, and I wanted to thank you for your tremendous service here. You've been level-headed and I'm thankful for you participating in our council. And for Councilman Brankino, I have grown beyond belief over the last, you know, geez, since 2016 and then 2018, uh, when Councilman Brankino came here. I mean, the world was such a different place. We've gone through so much together and I can certainly say that Councilman Brankino did his job with honesty, passion, integrity. I never have accused him of not telling you how he feels, but the best thing about Councilman Brankino is that no matter what he says to you, the next conversation you can have, he's still going to listen to what you have to say and make a decision based solely off that. And that's really all you can ask for in a, in a fair councilman. Um, and I was honored to have served with you, uh, throughout this entire extent and I'm privileged to call you my friend and I'm thankful for, uh, I'm very thankful that we got to, uh, grow so much together. I've learned a lot about this world and a lot about life and a lot of it has occurred sitting next to you and I'm super thankful for that. So thank you, God bless.
Mayor, I just, I just forgot to
Yeah.
And I shouldn't forget, this is almost a crime, forget this. John Nedz, always been here in front of me, always. His picture was always here. Thank you, John.
Yeah.
From up there, I hope I didn't disappoint you. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'll reserve my comments for the actual changing of the guard, so you still have another part of a meeting to go, but I will, um, um, defer or, uh, ask city manager to, um, take the comment on the flawless performance of staff during our most recent weather incident. So I, I think you should be the one to make the public aware of the effort that we all witnessed.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity and, um, you know, going into November, you, you think, okay, hurricane season is somewhat behind us, right? And come to find out, you never take that for granted. We're more in hurricane season than we're not. And, uh, to the point of our award that we received today is making sure our staff are safe and prepared for any event. I would actually like to turn it over to Chief Berryhill to provide some insight. It has been, um, probably doesn't have to be said, but it's been a trying couple of weeks. So Chief?
Thank you, Ms. Bevan. Um, Ms. Bevan asked me to give you a, a quick update on, uh, Tropical Storm, well, I guess it was Hurricane Nicole there for a minute, and to tell you about how our city responded. So, um, Tropical Storm Nicole, uh, gave us, uh, it, it, it kind of acted like it was going to come to us and then didn't and then did and then didn't. And so we were able to mobilize, uh, city staff up to a Level One Emergency Operations Center here in council chambers. We were able to do it relatively quickly. Um, we've, we practiced this plan recently. So, um, with that being said, um, we did the things that we do. We have a, a robust list of hurricane preparedness items and we got up to that standpoint. A lot of your directors were for 24 hours over that period. During that time, we responded to calls for service and all departments throughout the storm, we never stopped responding, um, throughout, uh, five storm, public, park, customer service was here for 24 hours for an extended period. They usually start the first and then end that activity the latest, um, to make sure our citizens are engaged all, all the way through. Um, they were able to return to normal operations, what we call demobilize, um, very quickly. And so we were back to normal operations, so we were able to conduct things like the veterans did, very quickly. Really for us, uh, you know, Mayor was saying that every storm is different. We don't know if we're going to be spending, um, resources on debris pickup or if we'll be spending resources on ensuring that our stormwater system is working properly or if we'll be spending resources with fire response. So in this, in this storm, um, we didn't necessarily spend as many of those kind of resources, but we did, um, have a big role in assisting our neighbors with equipment and personnel in their time of need. Um, one example from fire is Flagler Beach performed 24 high, um, high water rescues with our LMTV vehicle, um, in areas where they were experiencing where residents were, were flooded. That's a direct result of that interlocal agreement that you approved recently, um, that they're able to take our vehicle with their personnel and do that. It's something that we've done for a few years with them. Um, utility, stormwater, and public works all provided neighborly assistance to help with their wastewater system, to help with the issues they were having with A, uh, A1A. Uh, we sent back truck and personnel over there and, um, we've gotten some tremendous gratitude from our partners and friends at Flagler Beach. Um, as a team, we continue to use these opportunities to improve our city emergency management plan and to prepare for a storm or other, uh, natural disaster of significant impact. So if you guys have any questions? No?
Great job. I mean, I got to see it firsthand and I have to tell you, I used the word flawlessly, not lightly, but, uh, with, with really serious intent. It was amazing to watch how you all performed, so thank you and thank you, city manager, for that.
Well, thank you for your support, Mayor, and for all the support of the council. Thank you.
Very good. So with that, I would ask, uh, city council, uh, any final comments today?
I have nothing.
Very good. City manager, anything in addition to, uh, your comment before?
I do have, um, two additional items. One is part of your packet as a monthly reporting on emergency and sole source purchases. So if there's any questions, it would be the time to ask. Uh, seeing none, the last is for me as your city manager, I want to say thank you, Vice Mayor and Councilmember Finelli for, I, I think I speak from our team. Thank you for your service, your sacrifice, and your support, and that's all I have. Thank you.
It would be, uh, my distinct pleasure at this time to pass the gavel for the final time to Vice Mayor Brankino so that he can call for an adjournment to today's meeting. So if you would be so kind.
Motion to adjourn.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.